So it is seven o'clock and we are going to begin the October 17th meeting of the Tuftonboro Planning Board, which is a continuation of the application of the Winchester, CNR, and New Hampshire Land Use Trust draft map map forty-two-one subdivision. Before we begin, we are short one member tonight. Shocking way of reading that her daughter in labor was more important. But I do have to ask the applicant because we are short one, that does increase the burden upon you.
Can I give a moment?
Absolutely. While they're doing that, if you could, if anyone does have a cellphone, you could put it on silent or whatever. The E.S. sponsor?
It was good.
I've only seen the presentation. Is this responsive?
It's just working.
Would you like to continue?
The next thing.
We would not be in any better shape to do this.
Uh, no alternates available?
There are no alternates. Just so everyone understands, the board is down in numbers, so the burden is increased on the applicant, which is why we passed it, due to the fact that we may not be in any better shape as far as board members in the near future if they decide to continue with the application. So I thank you for that. Before we begin, just some basic housekeeping items. Do I have an option to table the minutes until the next meeting? So, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful.
That's both of us.
I think at this point, this is our fifth meeting, and we have taken in quite a bit of information. We've heard from engineers and wetland scientists. We've heard from testimony from many people in the area, for or against. And it's been a very long process, but this is how zoning works. And this is where it comes to fruition of coming to our end product. As always, I'm going to ask everyone to be respectful of those around you. And ask that you wait for your turn to speak, that you speak politely, and that if something has already been said, or you have already said it, please wait for somebody to make sure everyone has had their chance to speak. Everyone will have their chance to speak here tonight, and we will continue, continue on. So with that, in the last meeting, if everyone remembers, we had the third-party review came back. We also had, this was deemed a regional impact, and we had the information come back from the planning commission. The towns engineer found items that needed to be approved upon with the application. Most of them were technical in nature, whether it was dimensional, such and so forth. We did receive from the applicant their responses to that. We have also received from Horizon's engineering, we didn't send what the applicant had sent. And they have reviewed it, and they find that it appears to be correct, and that they have answered the questions. They wanted to be clear that they did not analyze all of the calculations, but that they looked at the plans themselves, and we do have a letter from them. And I would just like to read that letter before we get in. From Kathy Conway to the Tuftonboro Planning Board. Per my conversation with Matt today, we reviewed the resubmital from New Hampshire Land Use Consultants for the Farm Island Subdivision. We did not recheck the calculations, but in reviewing the plans in the letter, the lots of concern have been made larger and appear to meet the dimensions and size. Requirements that were discussed in items one and two lot dimensions and New Hampshire subdivision approval of Horizon's letter dated October 3rd, 2019. The issues discussed in Appendix A of Horizon's report dated October 3rd, 2019 regarding lot frontage and lot depth also appear to be corrected. Again, we did not check all of the calculations, but reviewed the plans and data as presented. I think the other issues outlined in the letter related to water quality, parking, et cetera will need to be discussed and decided by the planning board. We have offered our opinion, and New Hampshire Land Use Consultants have responded to our letter in the conversation that occurred at the October 3rd Planning Board meeting. If you have any questions, please let us know. Thank you, Kathy. With that, I'd like to ask the applicant, can you present the changes to the application?
So, Scott Franco from New Hampshire Land Consultants. We'll be tonight here with Randy Owen and Cindy Craft, the applicants, and Attorney Sullivan. As you said, we've been here, this is our first meeting, it started out August 1st. We received some reviews from our butters. Then July, we had a quick meeting, and then September, we resubmitted plans, which got sent out to Horizon's for review. October 2nd or so, we received their review. And then we resubmitted last Friday, and it sounds like they've approved the changes that we made. As they said, there were three lots that they had kind of concerns about. It was these two, I believe, and then there was some concerns down here. We've enlarged these to make them work. One of their concerns was the way the depth of this lot, the depth of that lot. They were measuring from east to west, as we had measured north and south. So it meant the depth, now it means, or meant the depth, north and south, but not east-west. So we revised a lot of beats in every which way, so whichever way they consider the frontage that lot, lot meets the regulations now. There was a well radius over here, even though the state of New Hampshire allows you to overlap your well radius into undeveloped land. The town of Tuftonboro likes to see the well radius completely on the lot. We moved the well back to keep it within the lot area. There was a lot of other little comments about frontage over here. We are short by two feet the way Tuftonboro measures the frontage is different. It's not just the frontage of the lake, it's fifty-foot cord lengths. So we had to fix that by two feet, and that's why that line kind of shifted up. There were some dimensional corrections, just text errors, that we corrected. And then the biggest thing was the slope, lot sizing analysis, which we went in depth with our review and fixed all the lots so they meet the state regulations. I did have a pre-application review by Eric Thomas at New Hampshire D.E.S. I sent him all the data that I submitted to the town with the plans. And he commented, you know, of course, the frontage, the lot sizing, and lot width, which is all meeting the state standard now, once he reviews that. A few other things that we've accomplished over the last two weeks is we received a letter from the fire chief noting no issues, and the way they fight the fires on islands, I think, is explained in that letter. And one of the biggest issue, I think, that's left is the parking that we discussed at the last meeting. There was a lot of discussion going around. We received a letter or an email from the road agent, kind of two options, what he thinks would address some parking concerns. And I'll let Randy talk more about that. But we did receive his comments, and we talked, I talked to him. And he said which one that he thinks is the best, that if we were going to propose something to do out of the two options that he sent to us. I believe that wraps up the plan, and there's a lot of little things that Horizon's came up with, but those are the major things that we corrected on the head of the letter. Turn it over to Attorney Sullivan.
Andy Sullivan. I just want to address the parking as quickly as I can. There's other ways you should look at the parking. The first thing is to, I look at the definition of dwelling. Your town law says dwelling has to be great park facility with kitchen facilities and sanitation. Cottage on the island has no sanitation. Matter of fact, what, every bedroom has one of those old-fashioned?
Commodes.
Commodes with the porcelain. Who knows what happened years ago there, but there's no sanitation in that building. Now, I submit it's not a dwelling under your own definition. If it's not a dwelling, there's no parking requirement for that cottage. Otherwise, this, I think it's Article four or something, it says, each new residential building has to have two parking spots, okay? Another thing that concerns me, there's no residential building on this subdivision as we speak today by your own definition, consequently, there's no need for any parking. If there was, I comment that the parking permit right now, the town says in its application for a nineteen-mile bay overnight parking that each property owner is entitled to up to four permits, four permits. Now, your requirement of parking under 1.19, I think it is, 1.1.19, excuse me, 6.2, it just says two parking spots per dwelling unit. It doesn't say whether they're twenty-four hours, it doesn't say whether year-round. This is two parking spots. By your own procedures and protocol, there's already four available by permit. Winchester's have it, I'm ready to use it as a guess, but they buy that, then that can be moved over there, over to them. Plus, the parking itself on that nineteen-mile bay park area says, it's intended for the temporary parking of property belonging to owners of island. So I get the combination, I get the four overnight permits, and I got, it's a first come, first served, but there's no limitation, parking that is for the owners of islands, of property, island property in Tuftonboro. So between the two, easily two parking spots, or maybe four or more. Additionally, it does, your own board just doesn't say where the parking has to be. I've just said, I don't believe there's any need for any parking because it's not a dwelling by your own definition. I believe nonetheless, there is more than two parking spots already available to the owner of that island, both between the overnight parking permits and the parking lot. With Don McCurdy, a longtime friend of Randy, they have an agreement where they can park on Don's property, also located up in the middle. You're accessible by the island by boat, what, five minutes, ten minutes?
Lot less.
Lot less. I'm not an item guy, not a lake person, I love them now. But it's explained to me, and it makes a lot of sense. People coming up from southern tier, they're going to take the fastest path off that they'll perhaps get here. And that often means parking on the other side of the bay rather than this side. So it doesn't equate necessarily that someone, well, house on Farm Island is going to park in this area. They may park elsewhere because it's faster actually to get to their island lot. Again, your board just doesn't specify that parking space has to be in Tuftonboro or even in, or on this side of the bay. So we have, there's no sanitation facility whatsoever, apparently never was before the way we interpret it these days. I don't think commodes are it. So it's not a dwelling by your own definition. That definition is, again, rated section 1.1.19. It requires sanitation. The two parking spots nonetheless are available, both with a permit for overnight parking spots. And that parking lot that's specifically intended for island owners of Tuftonboro, so for residents, so for people who have property in Tuftonboro. Don McCurdy and Randy have an agreement, you can park anytime you want, Tuftonboro, two cars. And as for the, I'll ignore that standard, but as for the overall parking, again, there's parking available at the public parking, there's parking available at arenas, a lot of people may own their own private parking spot somewhere, there's parking on the road. There's plenty of parking for this proposed project, even though it may not be built out for years and years to come. But it is.
Randy, do you have anything about that?
I guess I would. I've owned, or my family and I have owned on Cow Island. I've owned a property on Chase Island. I've owned a property on Rattlesnake Island, and I've owned this up in Pier 19. And I've done, you know, some of the calculations and talking about the parking. Currently, there's five hundred island houses in the town of Tuftonboro. And the capacity with the calculations of the parking spots is not delineated real well. Would allow fifty feet if you do math like Scott or the engineer would do. So currently, we're providing one lot, one parking lot for every ten houses. And as it stands, there is kind of nine there, I mean, kind of ten, one there, and nine left. So we're only proposing nine, and the current status and so forth with the town is provided. It's one for every ten houses. Interesting, in the time that I had Cow Island and then got separated from my wife, and I ended up going to Rattlesnake Island to get a less expensive house. I went to Rattlesnake, and I happened at that time to own in Pier 19. I was looking at Pier 19, I had property in Rattlesnake, and I lived in Manchester. And it was interesting that I could have driven my car a very short distance, like forty-five minutes from Manchester, somewhere in Alton, gotten a short boat ride and go to Rattlesnake. But instead, I went through my boat slip, and I actually drove an extra forty minutes to get to Pier 19, took my boat across the broads, all the way to Rattlesnake, which makes no sense, and I will come do that again. Cindy and I almost died one night in November, it was so windy, getting to Rattlesnake. But you don't do that. But the point of the Rattlesnake thing is I had a boat slip. Rattlesnake, I owned for three years, every year I paid the camp charges for, somebody brought up, Rattlesnake has land that every property owner on Rattlesnake has access to. And I owned it for three years, I paid the camp charges. I never went through, I never found, I never looked at the parking area. You just don't do it. I mean, you don't, you do it if you have to. So in hindsight, you know, if I settled and I wanted to be on Rattlesnake, I just liked the north end of the lake, I would have found a parking spot, I would have made the short distance. We want to drive our car less and our boat more. So, anyone that would be going from, for instance, my brother uses my mother's camp primarily on Cow Island, and he used to live in Auburn, and Pier 19's under our sentence. He's moved since then to Henneker. So he now, he just bought a slip, and the slip's available, all the slips, a lot of slips available. But he bought a slip at Truckslers, and they have parking there, and they go to camp that way. So it's more of where you live in your permanent residence where you go to an island. So in conjunction with this thing, and you know, Farm Island coming together, the way we like it, we're very happy with the presentation, if we look at some of the title lots and the amount of space we've got, we've got a very easy presentation, it's beautiful, it's going to be beautiful if we do sell the lots and start, you know, developing, if it ever happens, and I'm not saying that's my immediate plan, but we've also begun looking at various pieces of land to do something similar to what Rattlesnake has done. I worked with Carol, we've made some offers on other pieces of land. Nothing has come together, she's shown me, you know, insides and parts of buildings before. So we're actively looking to get some land, should we sell them a lot. But for right now, I think there's only a requirement for two lots, and that's what we would like to stick with. If in the future we have to do something else, I think we're going to buy some land and have parking provided our own like Rattlesnake does.
Randy, would you have an objection to a condition of approval that required you to certify that you have two parking spaces before a building permit is issued for a lot?
I would have no objection. So in other words, the building permit would require that we, before you build it, we either buy a slip at Harrell or at Truckslers or wherever. Yes, I would not.
Other than the town law?
Sure, no, that would be fine.
So in other words, you would have to provide proof that you had two off-street parking spaces, whether it be however it was?
Yeah, that would be fine. Yeah, that would be fine, and likely.
If I could clarify that, could that be simply a lease as well, as opposed to a key ownership?
I think the board is, you know, evaluate what the historic practice has been, and then we could probably, but we have not had to deliberate.
Okay. Okay, he said, I just want to make one other observation. I still believe he meets the criteria with the overnight parking permit and the access to that public lot, but that's mine.
Would that be two lots?
Yes, I'll say.
I think so, hopefully. Would that be two lots per?
Name and address.
Oh, sorry. Ron Albert, let me show you the road. I'm just trying to understand Randy's comment there. Would that be two parking lots approved per lot approved for subdivision?
It would be exactly as the zoning is written. It would be exactly as the zoning is written. So let me just read the parking requirement for everybody. So, off-street parking, section six, one. On and after the effective date of this ordinance, all new structures and developments, as well as additions to or changes in use in existing structures, shall be provided with off-street parking spaces in accordance with the following specifications in section six point two. Residential dwellings, which would be two spaces per dwelling lot.
So is the applicant saying that he will assure that there will be two parking spaces per lot approved?
The applicant for a building permit would be issued, he would have to prove two parking spaces per residence or per dwelling.
So how?
We're going to deliberate on that, so.
In regards to that, how about boat slips? Would that, you have to have a boat slip? Because a neighbor of mine said he has a friend looking for one, and he couldn't find any in the area. I noticed this in an ad in Alton, and this, a boat slip being sold for ninety thousand dollars. So, and it's right there when I was walking down by the, in town. So I'm thinking, gosh, it must be pretty hard to find boat slips, so should that be put in? That they have to have a boat slip?
There's no requirement in the zoning for them to have a boat slip. The requirement in the zoning is if they are going to have a dwelling, that they have to have two off-street parking spaces.
So it would be up to the homeowner to figure that out?
It doesn't specify, you know, that they have to be on the property. It specifies two off-street parking spaces. Again, I know I've explained this before, but we do not have the authority to waive zoning. It's not in our power. We just read the zoning and interpret it.
Bob McCord of Melbourne Village. Even though Randy's signing a fortune proposing, why does it have to be a condition? If it's in the zoning, as attorney just explained, anybody that decided to put a dwelling up has access to four spots, just like everybody else on the island. So why would you have to make it a condition? It's already in the zoning?
We're going to discuss the, historically, how this, you know, historically, what have our residents done for access and parking? And, you know, we'll go over that with the board.
It almost looks like you're trying to compel them to do something that...
I am certainly not, I am just reading the zoning exactly how it is written. And if applicant does not like the zoning, they can always seek relief from it, reform their variance. But the zoning reads clearly, two parking spaces per residence or dwelling, not two parking spaces per lot.
But his attorney and our own regulations prove that there's at least four available.
We're going to talk about it as a board.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
On the comments of the fellow from the survey, give me a moment. Comment about what defines a dwelling, having to have sanitary facilities. He says there's none, as I understand the comments. I've been on the island, I have pictures, it's kind of unique, probably your empire, that is a three-holer outhouse. You have probably seen that, because I see her. Does that not qualify then to make that a grandfather dwelling?
Let me read the dwelling.
Maybe that counts as three.
So the dwelling definition?
It's 1.1.19.
Dwelling unit, one or more rooms, including cooking facilities, in a dwelling structure with accompanying, accompanying rooms, sanitary facilities, designed as a unit for occupancy by not more than one family for living and sleeping purposes. So I think that would have to be a discussion the board would have about whether that meets the definition of dwelling. Now, traditionally, the way to look upon this, it's clearly been stated that cottage is from 1905. So it would predate zoning in 1972. But by doing a subdivision, we are creating a new law. So, to answer your question, if it's found to be, as I understand zoning, found to be a dwelling unit, it would be required to show proof of two parking spaces.
It's a three-holer.
I have a picture, I'll send it to you.
I don't know if this matters, but oddly, the outhouse is three lots away because they had the outhouse like five hundred feet from the house.
We're pretty deep in weeds at that point.
But, and then, more important than that, it does have three holes, and it has three kids, and I wanted no sibling rivalry.
Anyone else? Anyone else?
That, I mean, that Johnson, Jemai Millman on behalf of Camp Town App. Just some questions. I'll stick with the parking first, since that seemed to be the hot button issue today. I think Attorney Sullivan has already sort of made my point, the zoning ordinance is there, he's making a whole bunch of arguments of how you get around this. This is really ultimately a zoning board decision. He's really asking the board to make an interpretation of those zoning ordinance. I don't think the board could do that. I think they have to get a decision from the zoning board whether that works or whether they need a variance from that. So that would be point one on that. Second, the parking regulations, your overall zoning ordinance talks about the development of a hole. And so one of the important things is, I think you have to look, not what presently happened just today, but into the future. Yes, it's a two-lot subdivision, but let's not kid ourselves, there's gonna be houses on these properties. And we also think you need to look towards the consumers moving forward. Mr. Chairman, you asked a question about beating for, you know, would he certify for a building permit, but the problem is, he may not be the owner of those lots forever. And so there needs to be some mechanism. I would represent that if the parking needs to be addressed now, it's part of the plan, and it should be addressed in a way that is a deed restriction. Last thing we need to do is have people buy island lots and not appreciate them. In fact, they might not have parking that way. So I really would impress upon the board to consider that, deal with that directly, and deal with it in such a way that is not dependent on continued ownership of the applicant of all these lots. So to make sure moving forward, it's very difficult to approve a lot, approve it when the zoning requires parking, but kick the can down the road to the next owners who may then want to build a house to have to deal with the parking. So that would be point one on that. I know the planning board talked about identification agreements and maintenance agreements for the utilities. I don't know where that stands, but given the fact that I don't have much background historically in terms of doing this, and there will be improvements that need to be done on the property. I know they're not talking about building anything, but I read the information in the New Hampshire Electric Co-op, is a significant amount of trenching and construction work is gonna happen to be done by the applicant, ultimately approved by the co-op, but in terms of being able to lay the utility lines down and do that. I'm not aware, so maintenance obligation, identification, Mr. Starble, Craig Starble, who's the abutter, through whom that power line runs through his property right now, I think he should be entitled to that same protection. And then moving forward, like I talked about before, again, the applicant may not be here forever, so the planning board should really consider whether those indemnification and maintenance obligations should be deed restrictions and run with the land, such that when this development is essentially a mature development with all the houses on it, that their, this town still has the same protection as well, and that the indemnification obligation doesn't go away, and the applicant sells all or most of the lots out of it. Next, I'm not aware of any construction estimates that have been provided by the applicant. Maybe they have, in which case I take the comment back, but there's maintenance bond that needs to be discussed, and there also needs to be an surety in place of the one hundred and fifteen percent of the construction value. And I don't know that there's been any, any information presented in the planning board about what that should be. So, again, that's an issue that should be taken care of. I think we started this presentation in the very beginning of the first meeting, and this is a brand-new issue of an island subdivision. I think it's incumbent upon the planning board to be very thoughtful and thoughtful and take its time. There's a bunch of unanswered questions about this. There's unanswered questions about the utilities. I read it as the applicant is going to maintain responsibility. That's not how I understood the applicant presenting it relative to that. So again, that's an issue that needs to be considered. You just, you need to make sure there's enough financial surety in place for, given the applicant's background financially. If you win the start, it gets started, if it fails, that becomes a big problem for the town, so you need to make sure there's protections that way. I would consider even whether there's any security. I mean, this is a single-purpose LLC that's gonna be set up for developing it. So, you know, depending on how it's structured, there may not be assets behind that. So, I would ask for all those reasons, I believe it's premature for the planning board to consider this, because there's too many open questions where the applicant needs to prove, and need to burn out proof before the plan for it.
Is it time to be addressed?
Yes, sir.
Number one, there are no public approvals on this property. There's no need for any bonds, no bond.
Power.
The power is not, the town's not providing the power.
No, the applicant's.
Right. Okay, so they're paying for it, okay. They'll have whatever agreement they have with the power company, but it's not a public approval being.
So traditionally, the way the town of Tuffenborough was treated improvements for a subdivision is that they can be an surety bonding letter of credit, or fixed-up letter of credit, or the applicant can complete the installations inspected and signed up on the coordinate lots and so on.
Okay. Yeah, this particular thing, Greg, with Ron.
Traditionally, traditionally, they use the last one.
Right. As for limitations of deed, I know there seems to be a tendency in some towns to do that. Quite two old dogs, myself, which was a particularly old woman, but the law's in place. There's no need for a deed restriction. It's already there. Whoever does any building or whatever, they're gonna have a town search done, have a building, somebody's gonna make inquiries to the town, and the law may change. You might put a restriction in that. Maybe not as onerous as it will be twenty years from now. And then it's a question of what applies, especially legal loan. I, I'm not opposed per se to any type of restriction. I just find it cumbersome and unnecessary since the restrictions on interest is already there. Same thing with any building requirements, they're gonna have to get DES, this. They're gonna apply with all their requirements, as any other builder or any other developer would have to do. So really no need for it to be addressed at this time.
Yes.
It looks like, since the parking lot at Parry Mall Bay was brought up, and it was sort of just left, and obviously it's in place. The last couple of years, I'm sorry, Chief, Chief Andrew Shadoria, Tuffenborough Police Department, I live in town. Yes, it does say it's intended for that, but it's not exclusive for island residents. We have issued, not we, the town has issued permits, hand tags for people that are not on Lakefront property too. The last couple of years, with Pier nineteen store not being open, there has been space in that lot. Prior to that though, when that store was open, and that front lot wasn't available, it was packed. To think that that's gonna be, I think I would defer to you as to thinking as to whether or not that constitutes a dedicated parking space. First come, first served, as needed, as available, so.
I think what I know, what I was saying was, they would not be able to, that the requirement, you know, that we're thinking of economy, the condition is that they prove they have before they're issued a building permit, two spaces, other than the town's.
I just want to give a little bit of the history of where that's at and the basis there.
And that way, you know, guests, friends, visitors, whatever they have, can use a parking lot in this traditional manner, and whatever the laws, regulations, or rules of the town are at that time.
Don McQuirr. I think Matt made a good point. You folks cannot change the zoning. And what it seems like you're contemplating is putting a condition on the applicants that they have to prove that they have two parking spots, which I think the attorney's already talked about. They have parking available. Chief's points are well taken. There is no designated parking for each person, but there's a lot available to those five hundred people that have cottages or property on islands. What you're talking about doing is changing the rules under this application. That you've never acquired anybody else that's built a property on the island to prove that they have two parking spots, have you?
No.
So I don't understand how you can, you know, going forward maybe, maybe the town wants to change things and tighten up the zoning or whatever, but I don't see how you can attempt to compel the applicants to force someone to do something that's already legal and appropriate for the zoning. Is that objection? What?
The fact that the town may not have in the past adhered to the zoning does not exempt this new application. The other applications for subdivisions may not have been challenged, and they just slip right through. But in this case, this is a special situation, where adherence to the zoning ordinance is, is, is the critical issue. I don't think you can exempt it because it's been ignored in the past.
We are adhering to the zoning exactly how it is written.
Thank you.
Yes.
Lord Forbes, I think a big difference is, to your note, that they're not gonna have parking spaces there, but they've got parking spaces elsewhere. However, if we were doing a subdivision on the mainland, we never had to say, the two parking spots are with your house. You wouldn't say, you know what, I think I'm gonna park at the IGA down the corner. You would not say that. So, to take yours, it, it kind of applies, but it doesn't really, because it's inherent in the zoning that our normal two blocks would be with our house. And Randy said he'd go and look at it in another way and have a spot.
But we didn't.
But we would never, we would never, you would never accept, I'm gonna build some condos. Let's just say I was gonna buy, I bought spider web, and I'm gonna put condos in there. But you know what? We wanna park somewhere else. You'd laugh. Everybody would laugh at that. It's inherent that it should go with the lot. And in this case, of course, we can't get the car to the lot, and so that's why we just can't say, we're gonna use the town parking spots. Because you know what? Those town parking spots might not be there in five years. We don't know what's gonna happen weapons-wise.
What's interesting is that nowhere in the subdivision regulations doesn't require proof of two parking spaces. It's in the zoning. If somebody was to do a subdivision, a modern subdivision today, or actually any subdivision we've ever required, we have never required anyone to prove they have two parking spaces. That happens when they, you know, go to Jack, code officer, and says, I would like to build a residence. Jack then enforced that I need to see two, you cannot prescribe two parking spaces. So the other interesting thing about this, you know, we talked about the parking spaces as they are written exactly. Do not say they have to be on the same lot. They say two off-street parking spaces. And what further complicates this, and makes it interesting, because zoning is interesting, believe it or not, kind of like, you know, organic chemistry, island lots are also exempt under six seventy-four forty-one from road furniture, to add further layer of complication to them. So they don't have to prove it.
Don McQuirr. In the previous meeting, didn't some of the board members testify that the parking that's provided for island was not maxed out, were actually spaces? One board member offered a view of the parking lot on the Fourth of July.
From what, from what I saw, what I seen, because they made a point up there, I, whatever that means, it does look through August and September.
So wouldn't the applicant be allowed to use the available space?
The applicant would be allowed to use the available space, but the limitations are larger than the requirements of the town.
Right. And it's a first come, first served basis, so it's a little nebulous, the requirement.
And exactly as the zoning.
Hi, Karen, I'm the same as you, but just to reiterate what the chief just said, and I said it in the last meeting. Before Parry nineteen closed down, that parking lot was full, not the Parry nineteen parking lot, the public parking lot. And because Parry nineteen closed down, everyone is now parking down there. So if that is sold, which I hope someone does something with it, but, you know, all those cars may not be allowed to park there, and will have to go back to this spot. As the chief said, two years ago, it was jam-packed. I walked that road all the time, and it was packed, packed, packed. And Parry nineteen had its parking, and now it's reversed along two years. So when the property's sold, I'm sure that parking lot will be full again.
To support the last speaker's last comment, I received an email today from a party that was forwarded on to Camp Town App. I don't see the picture, I think, that has Google map photos of that lot from some time ago, totally filled up. So if we're looking at the capacity, or rather the extent to which that lot is filled recently, because the, because Pier nineteen store is a, if you look back on the Google maps, you see that the lot is completely filled, completely filled. Those pitches, I'm sure, can probably be produced if the board would request those.
So, you know, it's a good point. I think that overall, everyone does have to keep in mind that in the town of Tuffenborough, there are, as you might miss, I'm sure some of the town people have them off by March, roughly around five hundred island homes. And that is the only parking lot for five hundred island homes. You know, that's provided by the town of Tuffenborough specifically for island residents.
A good reason to deny the application.
We're talking ten out of five hundred. So when we look proportionally.
Two thousand pieces, twenty. That's, that's, that's about three-quarters of the capacity of that lot.
But again, when you look at the portion of existing five hundred homes in usage, and then you look at the proportion and say, ten, five hundred now, ten proportionate for cars in the lot, it's a very small amount of increase, in my opinion.
Respectfully disagree.
I may just, I'm gonna hand out, we have some thoughts, we're ready to help the planning board in terms of potential conditions. Again, it goes to my point, this is premature, so wanting to ask for, I think the parking is required to be dealt with immediately. And I think you have to look at this, recognize it's gonna be a residential subdivision sooner rather than later.
Is this the same as what you presented earlier?
No.
I'm either gonna read this, or you are under the records, so.
However you want to do it.
Conditions for approval of subdivision, just so everyone recognizes this is what the attorney represents, Camp Town App recommends. Applicant, not the board, but the attorney, applicant must execute a maintenance agreement with the town in the form acceptable to town council, ensuring that the utility line to the island is maintained at no expense. Applicant must execute an indemnification agreement in favor or the town and property owner on which the utility line runs in a form acceptable to town council, agreeing to indemnify and hold harmless the town and property owner from any claims, costs, damages, or expenses associated with utility line and the energizing of the same. Applicant shall be required to include as a deed restriction on the property it tends to acquire, as well as any deeds conveying the area's lots, the requirement that future law owners remain responsible collectively to the utility maintenance and indemnification obligations set forth above. Even after the applicant has sold off all or some of the lots, applicant shall be required to include deed restrictions with regard to requirements of septic systems designed to use on the island. Plan shall provide for a fifty-foot non-budible bumper around the area with potential loom nest in, as agreed upon by the applicant and occupier. Applicant shall provide an estimate from a licensed engineer at the estimated cost for all site work, and shall provide the town with a surety bond or a revocable letter of credit worth one hundred and fifteen percent of the cost estimate. Applicant shall provide proof that it has satisfied all conditions or requirements of the fire department, require installation of fire ponds or the like.
Fire ponds?
Applicant shall provide proof that the mandatory zoning requirement that each lot at two off-street parking spaces has been satisfied through the use of property owned or leased by the applicant, or proof that applicant has obtained variance by the zoning award adjustment. Applicant shall provide adequate storm drainage required, carried to exercise water courses or existing storm drains to maximum extent feasible, no increase in surface runoff limited. Storm sewers and/or drainage facilities must be based on a design flow with a minimum return interval of ten-year, twenty-four-hour storm. Retention structures, fifty-year, twenty-four-hour storm per soil conservation service handbook. Applicant shall address lighting, must be designed to control glare, light trespassment, or intrusive light. Conserve energy, maintain safety. Establish funds for off-site capital improvements. Establish a traffic study for potential impact. Establish a tree study to address removal of trees, to contain runoff, and be sure that the property is not clear-cut. Each lot should be cleared as it is being developed. All these minutes must be depicted on plan. Applicants to address and provide for documents or documents during construction, which plan must be in writing and accepted to the town. Applicants shall provide proof it has obtained all other necessary estate permits. Tuffenborough subdivision regulations state the subdivision shall reserve such natural existing features, wetlands, watercourses, steep slopes, stone walls, large green trees, and/or habitats in scenic views. You got that? You got that? Does anybody on the board have any questions with this?
I think we've heard just about it all. Last five meetings, every question, every subject, everything's been brought up. I think we've heard it all. Yes.
Forgot how this works out for the applicant. We should keep those on file. Throw them right back, Canton Act, because they continue to build up their property, not only on the mainland, but on the islands. Same thing should apply, but you require them here on Monica's.
This will be on the public record and anyone has it, they're accessible.
Mr. Chairman, Justin Pase, Land Board Council from Tommy Tucker, Chicago. Just want to address a few comments that we made tonight and that the board's directed to head into deliberation at this point.
Can you turn it this way?
Gladly facing the board I'm addressing. With regards to the allegation that the planning board does not have the authority to make an interpretation of zoning, I respectfully disagree. The statute 6765, Roman 2, specifically discusses the fact that that's part of early planning boards. It's common sense that it's a necessary process that this planning board must undertake. So within the specific context of parking, I understand and anticipate that you'll likely consider all of the arguments and issues that have been brought to you over these last five meetings. But with regards to the parking issue, which has been brought up and discussed, I would encourage this board to read the planning language of the zoning ordinance. I would encourage this board to discuss and deliberate over the way that it has historically interpreted that language and applied to other island subdivisions. I think it should reach an interpretation as to whether or not the requirement can be met off-site, in other words, not on-site, in light of, as you pointed out, Mr. Chairman, the fact that frontage on the road is waiting under the town zoning laws. I'd also encourage the board to consider the testimony from all of the planning boards and the police chief, and consider the context of the permitting schedule. And understand that the language on the face of a permit is something that is within the purview of the board of selectmen pursuant to their responsibility, their prudential responsibility to manage real property. That four-person requirement is not something that I understand to be in the zoning ordinance. And I would also encourage the town, the planning board, to consider the fact that per the testimony before the planning board tonight, apparently that's not always enforced and is certainly subject to change at the discretion of the board of selectmen. So I think you should consider all of the evidence, but ultimately, again, in the context of the parking, reach an interpretation as to whether or not it can be accomplished off-site. And thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to address a couple of points here. This is a condition for approval that matters to me, Captain. Can't, I'll skip around. Some of these are already addressed, but these things required to approve for requirements of subject system design, DES is going to handle that. Plan for 50-foot non-budible bumper around potential loom nesting, done. Applicant should approve that it satisfied all conditions of the requirements of the fire department. Requiring fire ponds, lake, not applicable here. Applicant for storm drainage, shoreline protection, address that. Lighting, lighting can be minimal if you have residential, since there's trees on there, lighting is going to be minimal. Establishments of off-site capital improvements, none that are aware, it's not applicable. Traffic stays in hammer-to-death. Tree study, shoreline protection's going to do that. Easements on the plan, they'll all be on the board. Address, provide dock and abarages, various constructions, whatever the applicable or local rules and regulations will be applied for. Same thing will obviously nothing to them without the applicable state permits.
Does anybody else like to speak? Yes.
Sue, we're down to bring the road. I haven't personally looked at the parking area, the town parking area. I remember overall these years seeing a camper with, you know, the windshield covered over. Is what is beyond the designated area? What is all that land back there? Is this something? I mean, parking is a concern of mine, but is that something that the town can expand, that parking area? I don't know.
Yes.
It could be maybe.
The town owns the land.
It's under Leach.
No, it's not.
Not that portion. So if it could maybe give some more, just to get it off the road. My concern is that road parking. And let's say that Para-19 is sold and is not an option anymore.
I think what we've determined, or at least what I've determined, I think I remember is the board commented on it as well, is that the reason the trailers are parked on the side of the road is not so much the availability of parking, it's that it's a shorter distance to the launching.
Sure.
Wouldn't it be a good idea then to have the neighborhood high-rise, that's when you have to hurry home to them, sign up, because it's so unsafe during the summer.
I don't disagree with you.
And that's not your fault, but maybe that's something we...
Would be the board of selectmen.
Or perhaps we want to lower the speed limit a lot.
Well, that's not going to make a difference. Cars parked, there's no room, you've got trailers in the summer.
Only if you're talking about safety, when you're talking about parking, shoulders are plenty wide along there, adequately.
Well, you can't control people's speed, but you can control whether they're parking or not.
Well, you can control their speed too.
Well, it's not Swissman, they're 24-horsemen.
In the end, it's that portion of people parking on it is the state highway.
Yep, and we'll have to go there.
And it's the sole domain of the DOT.
Well, maybe that should be straight back first.
It's a planning board cannot deny an application based on traffic.
Well, maybe the town, people, if we're so concerned...
I would recommend we're going to the selectmen on that. It would probably be, or the local DOT chief.
Okay.
Matt, with the parking on the side of the road, those aren't typically the island people. The people that are coming...
No, it's got nothing to do with the islands, just safety and term.
I understand. Then bring it up another time then, I guess, when it's up.
We're all talking about it.
Yes.
Randy's right, we're drifting. It's got nothing to do with this application. And the chief is here, maybe he knows, but I would suspect that a lot of the cars and trailers and trucks on the side of the road are day people coming up, dropping their boat in at the launching ramp and parking. And that is because Tufton Grove is not charged anything. It's an open ramp, anybody can use it.
I believe your act.
Yeah, so it's got nothing to do with this. Yet if we're so concerned about parking congestion, then maybe the selectmen want to start to consider Tufton Grove residents are taxpayers only use of ramps. I'm not in agreement with that.
Many towns have done that. I'd hate when I go to America.
Right. So, but it's got nothing to do.
It's outside of jurisdiction.
Yes. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions or would like to speak? Okay. With that, I believe, close the public session. With that, I believe it is time for us to close the public session. So I ask one more time, would anyone like to speak or have a question? All right, I have a motion to close the public session.
I'll move.
All those in the room?
Aye.
Okay. So now what we need to do is evaluate the information we've gotten from town engineers, the engineers of the applicants, engineers from Canton Act, the information from the audience. And we need to begin to formulate what we feel about the opposition's brutal conditions, things that have been met instead of not. So with that, let's talk about some of the miscellaneous plan details, details about the plan that have been repaired, that might have led to work. And we had some lot lines where there was questions about the frontage off. We have had feedback back from Horizons Engineering about it. So I'd like to hear how the board feels about the existing lot lines, dimensions, as they're separated.
I have to say, I liked what I heard last time from Tyler at Horizons. And I am willing to accept the letter that we just got from Horizons about their impression of what they saw and what they read.
Well, I have looked at the new plan. I've studied it for quite some time. I've read the applicant's corrections. I've discussed these lots during several meetings that we've had. And I asked at the last meeting that you would clean it up. I know it was minor, some of those things, we agreed to do that. As far as I can see, it's been done. It's totally acceptable. Scott, your letter that you wrote was 30 pages. Okay, and the Hampshire Land Consultants going through all these items that we discussed. It's very thorough. And it's been reviewed by Horizons. I've talked to them myself. And I like everything we have there. It's within our subdivision requirements, as far as I can see it. So I'm very happy with it.
As far as ICE can see, it meets the subdivision requirements for dimensions and setbacks. And I think that the feedback on Horizons has been good. I would thank you for allowing some buffers for looms. I thank you for making the adjustments. I know that they were, you know, in terms of footage and things were minor, but it's important that all the i's and the t's be dotted. I mean, overall, it's been a long process, but I think, you know, if those lots are built as they are shown, it will be some of the biggest lots overall on Lake McSaw. Thank you.
I agree. I read the plan, corrected the plan. All the corrections that were brought up in the last meetings have been taken care of. And also, if, and when this is approved, it's still subject to the DES and federal applications for the final approval for them to build a house. So if we approve it, or approved here, the DES and federal regulations kick in and they have to satisfy that as well. So I'm concurring with what you guys have said.
I look back over the number of weeks that we've considered this application. Started out with 12 lots. Some concerns were brought forth by a surveyor that it didn't meet requirements. They reconfigured to a 10-lot subdivision. They went through some further review. There were some small issues that needed to be addressed. Those have been addressed. Some things that had been in compliance with state law but not with town regulations were tweaked. So I'm comfortable that the plan that we see today is probably had more sets of eyes looking at it than a lot of the subdivisions coming in there. What we have here represents a subdivision that meets the requirements of Town of Tufton.
I would say this is probably the most heavily looked at 12, 13 acres in the town of Tufton ever. More needed. So there's still the question if we have some approvals out there that would be needed in order to subdivide this town. Mainly shoreline permits, state subdivision approval. I thank you for beginning the process with talking to them about that. Historically, it's not unusual for permits to be granted with the condition of the permits to be a condition of approval. So how does the board feel about a condition of approval or moving forward that's based on the permits that are still outstanding, which would be DES wetlands permits, DES shoreline permits, DES subdivision approval, subsurface systems, etc.?
I think definitely that's necessary for any state and town permits of any kind, that that would have to be a condition. Any approval of this subdivision.
I think we would be reporting that all applicable permits are state or areas' condition.
I agree. All of the state requirements are applicable. So, and some of these are very difficult to get to. And that's why it's important that the plan be cleaned up too. And people ask, there's no questions that we haven't done a good job, but I think we have. So you'll be able to move on to the state. And we will require all those state requirements as part of our conditions.
That has been our practice in the past with subdivisions and how to treat that as conditions of approval. What do you think, Randy?
I feel the same way. That is, make your condition of county state approvals, state federal approvals, that's normal for any application. So I agree with that. That's applied to this case as well.
And it's, my recollection is it has been the practice of this board in the past to, for instance, for the state subdivision, we will make that a condition for our approval and not wait to provide our approval until after the state does. Is that correct?
That's correct.
It's a standard approach. It'll get the final sign off until the state subdivision approval is just suggested. But that doesn't happen until after it passes this stage at the town.
Correct. Can I just say something real quick? It's the permits, there's only one permit required at this point.
Hey, Jack, this is a public, you close the public session. You're going to close the public session, close the public session.
You're right, sir. I apologize. All subdivisions that are subject, in the townest in the town of Tufton that I can remember have always been subject to all applicable state federal approvals. Does anyone have any other thoughts about the state of the grounds?
The last time, wasn't there a mention, or shall I say a proposal, that these approvals should be gotten before planning board approval?
They would be a condition, so they have to be met before the subdivision.
We've never done that before, is that correct?
That's what I told him. That's what it's done. It's a condition, as a condition.
We make it a condition of approval before final sign off.
Yes, I just, sorry, I'm backwards on something. Never mind. Erase.
There's a lot going on.
Help me, yeah.
Does anyone else have any thoughts about permitting federal state?
Just as a condition of approval. That's what we do normally in all our subdivisions. I just shouldn't be treating any differently.
All right. Let's talk about septic systems. As we know, this would be contingent on the actual DES approval for the septic. There was a lot of talk about using advanced systems, whether it be Clean Solutions or Advanced Viro. Again, the DES is the sole authority on this, so to speak. My understanding is the Advanced Viro and the Clean Solutions, while they have advantages for reducing nitrogen, they do not have a large advantage for reducing phosphorus. And as we've learned from some of our training, phosphorus is generally looked at as the key ingredient of reducing problems, algae blooms, some of the issues that, like in the socket, smaller things, have faced. So I think it's important for us to encourage the applicant to use these more advanced systems. But I also understand that the DES, the DOT, views their subsurface disposable as their sole domain. And we could run into issues when requiring specific systems.
Okay.
They're not going to use stone pipe out there, that's for sure.
No, I highly doubt they're going to use stone pipe.
But I think the DES... But I think the D systems are good systems, probably a lot better than the ones that are on the waterfront right now. We could recommend that, but then again, the DES is gonna have the final say. Whatever they propose, if the DES approves it or doesn't approve it, it'd be up to them.
You know, if we look back, if we look at the islands, okay, and understand that the islands don't have roads, okay? There's much less impervious type things on the islands than there is on the mainland, okay? So there's less impact on islands, all right? And the DES manages the septic, they really do. It's their domain. I like to see a higher level if can be achieved, but it really is a state's requirement, all right? And so, as Matt mentioned, you have these other types of systems, Enviro systems, they require a lot of fleet fields, all right? You have Presby type systems requiring maintenance, it's not a bad thing. If they would consider those, great, but the state's really gonna dictate it, all right? And being an island without the roads and the requirements that we'll have about how you complete out those areas of construction with woodchipping mulch, all right, and manage that. So it's not going to run off caused by other things. It's gonna be, I don't wanna say it's bulletproof, but it's so superior than the mainland products that we have out there today, homes. So, you know, I don't see, I don't see any issue really with doing the septic out there. I think we should have state of the art. In the past, in the past two years, they've gotten way better than they were. So they just continue to improve. And the quality of your cleaning goods that you use have gotten way better. So the pluto's on in there the way they were five, 10 years ago. So it's real significant. So it's just, I don't see a waterfall, the issue or a, I wouldn't say, Bobby?
I'm sorry, I just, I think we should encourage the applicant to use the most advanced system. This is reasonable.
I do, and I made that point in my last meeting with you, too, that I thought those were the good way to go. So we would encourage that.
I think a bigger issue than the septic itself, as far as point source or erosion or phosphorus loading, is how the entry point for the barges and materials and materials for the septic material for buildings are moved from the barge to the water. Because I can tell you that, having been to many waterfront properties and I have lots, what you see a lot of times is that the area that was traversed by the machinery is not restored to natural elevations, nor is it properly addressed afterwards. And what you end up with is a depression. And then most of the water coming off of the lots tends to funnel down into the depression. So I think that the applicant, the town engineer had some fairly common sense measures, which were that returning to the natural elevation that it was before the barges. That using woodchips for the machinery to drive over in a dense mat and then restoration afterwards, as well as burn in for woodchips and such, are good measures that'll probably do more overall for preventing point source or phosphorus or whatnot than any single other thing we're going to do. But what does, what do you guys think about that as far as the water quality?
That would be a way to keep the water quality the same, yeah? To put the woodchips, restore the water back to original, to the construction. I agree. How can we make that as a condition? I don't know if that's possible, but how we can word that, put it in.
I think we can absolutely figure out.
I think we can do that.
Do that as a condition.
Absolutely.
I think we should do that. To restore the water to original.
Original elevations.
Original elevation. Because as, as, as Gary was right, the large ports, it's not like building, you know, mainland where you have roads and concrete and stuff.
Well, the interesting part, as Tyler brought up, is that, you know, as an island, many of the things that you have on the mainland don't exist. You do not have dry holes, you do not have rivers. You, the houses, and this is subject to interpretation, but if you drive around the lake, a house you see on an island is substantially smaller than a house you see on an island. And anyone can, you can see that to be true. So I think that the coverage and the exposure of these lots as far as, and I think Tyler addressed that vertical, as per your view, are gonna be much less.
Horizons is very specific about it, and I appreciated their contribution to that discussion on paper. So I would think that we would have town contingency in agreement with what Horizons is recommending.
Yeah, and I actually thought it was interesting because what they found was substantially different than what the Soffy Association in their letter had presented as far as what they thought of, you know, the phosphorus. Of course, it looks like they use a standard of potenti residential calculation, but islands are different in that way. What did you think?
Tyler recommended some very straightforward to me. I guess it would fall under what I would classify as best practice in protecting the septic and restoring it. And minimizing the impact on the water quality from runoff. It seems like a number of simple steps that provide a lot of, not something that's overly complex. And to the extent that we can incorporate that in a condition, I think that's.
The codes officer would have to oversee that, make sure. I think they're not making sure the current officer looks at the site afterwards and make sure that the elevations have been returned at mulched, mulched burn. They'll make that.
So we're talking specifically about installing water bars or other features to prevent runoff, right?
Water bars. He recommended a two-foot burn at the entryway. Six inches minimum of natural mulch, perfectly found on site. You know, that was checked on the roadway.
The path near the side slopes. Yep.
All right. Does anyone else have any thoughts about water quality?
No, I think what Tyler discussed here along with the engineer's recommendations, that's probably the best thing to do.
Okay, let's talk about wetlands. We've heard a lot about them. I've been to the island twice. I've been over there with the towns engineer. I've been there with the fish and game biologist. I think I've walked the vast majority of that island once I stepped foot on every single last edge of it, but I think I've got probably four or five hours into walking around these different areas. I heard, I heard two comments which I found were interesting when I was walking with Tyler and, and I, you know, I found it interesting myself. And, you know, when you, when you walk a lot, there's been delineated for wetlands, they flag it, you know, and you can tell where the wetlands have been determined. And the determination of wetlands appear to be very concerning. I mean, I'm not a wetland scientist myself, but having walked quite a few of these and been around, you know, you can see areas, and all of us can recognize wetland, you know, a normal swamp of a wetland, you know, you can see that. But they're not always things that you normally see. And, you know, when walking around with Tyler, walking around with fish and game biologists, they, they do that a lot. And, you know, in their cases, it was like, hey, they did a nice job driving these wetlands. They were, they were well done. I think that the, you know, Tyler, doing his job, you know, coming in afterwards, looked at an area that was a depression without question, and had wash came on the beach, and said, hey, this is not flagged, this may be what they call a burnable pool, you know? And I came up to the last meeting, and in the last meeting, the, let's call it the dueling wetland scientist, Matt and Phil, talking about, hey, this is why this is a burnable pool, this is why this isn't a burnable. I think what we saw at the end was the wetland scientists, you know, from the applicant said, this is not a burnable pool because X, Y, Z. And the other wetland scientist said it is because of this. But that standard was not applied until, if it was December or something like this year. So they were meeting the obligation, and both Tyler and I had seen the depth of the water that could be existing there. You could easily tell that it could not be the height that would need to be to be classified as a burnable pool under today's classifications, which is what we're looking for. So, and also, I think the applicant has done a good job on the loom area of, you know, there was only two areas on the island that were designated by, you know, the biologist as being suitable for looms. Again, they walked on, but there were only two that were found. And the applicant has put in a bumper around the one area on this side of the island where it appears they would pay one to miss. So what is the board feel of wetlands, has it been assessed?
Well, once again, as you're seeing with everything, we've got to go with what is permissible. And as you say, and as they said, whatever differing regulations may come into being in December, that's not what, that's not what was there. So I think we have to go along with that.
Well, we've had fish and game out there, biologists. Horizons has been out there, they're engineering people. The applicant's wetland scientist who signed off on it, you know, he stamped it, all right? It's his career, it's his signature on the line. Matt's been out there, they've looked at it. And I think once the water level adjustments are corrected and other things, you start to see the picture you had in that, in that pool, but you're really not getting much water in there at the level. So I don't see an issue with it and the way it's done on the, on the survey. I have no issue with it. I think it's, I think a lot of people have looked at it that are better than I, for sure. And it was okay. I'm fine.
It's also one of our stored practices to, when wetlands scientist stamps something, puts his stamp on the line, which you gotta all do every time you stamp something, to accept it. And I've seen nothing that would prove anything other than that to make a wetland scientist decision.
I feel that the applicant has satisfied our concerns as far as wetlands and the burnable pool. He's kind of stamped for two, and everything's been protected, except we put a disturbed shop act for a big blessing, so taking care of that. And I would have to go with that as well, so everything's been reviewed and it seems to be good.
I'm persuaded that the issues of wetlands, you know, or loom setback or what they're addressing on the line, as is presented.
All right, let's talk about everyone's favorite subject of electrical service. So Planning Board Council has reviewed the letter that's provided by New Hampshire Electric Co-op regarding the electrical service. It would appear that New Hampshire Electric Co-op owns the line. Once it's energized and once the, sorry, once the line is in place and they sign off on it under the ground, it's theirs, as it is viewed. They maintain it, they're liable for it, it's all theirs. I don't think it's out of place to ask for a maintenance agreement on the line, alleviating the town of Tufton with any liability.
From the applicant.
From the applicant.
Okay.
I think that's appropriate, given that it's an unusual nature of being an underground wire, underwater wire. It is different than how we have normally historically looked at applications of utilities in subdivisions. But on the other hand, we have never had a large, larger, it's actually not that large, but subdivision that was being installed on an island that's getting a line that is not energized, energized under the water. I also think that one of the things we need to address is usually we do a construction observation agreement on any improvements that are gonna happen on the property. Normally, this would be because we would have roads, and we would have a third-party engineering firm go in, look at, make sure everything's happening the way it's supposed to, make sure that materials are being, having proper set fencing and things like that on it. But in this case, the only improvement is original roads are utilities, and the end inspection is provided by New Hampshire Electric Co-op. I don't think it's inappropriate for us to insist on the codes officer to inspect it afterwards as well. We have that resource because of the roads across the town and anything else. And also to make sure that proper erosion controls, best practices and such are being used on the trench where it's done and provided. And incorporating, you know, what Horizons has recommended for erosion controls on the rest of the property, even though this is saddle well off the water. What is the board feel about utilities?
I certainly agree with what you just said. I think having the code officer at some other pair of eyes out there after, after it's done and after, you know, it's a good idea.
Well, certainly, they approve that. New Hampshire Electric Co-op owns it, okay? We know they own it. The applicant's gonna install the conduits, trenching vaults, drains, ropes, throwing ropes. And after that, New Hampshire Electric Co-op will install the wires, the cables, and maintain it. When they turn it on and energize it, it's theirs, they own it. So they, they want to maintain it from their own out. So, you know, I don't see a problem. I think that the only thing, other thing we did talk about, but was potentially signage there, that this cable running between mainland and the shoreline. Now, we as board really can't put signage out of state property, which is the lake. But certainly, that maybe New Hampshire Electric Co-op could post a sign on the reason, which would be on the mainland, okay? You know, mitigate those people that think they just boat right through and not have issues. One being, it's not applicable to this, you know, there's, there's power underground, underwater there. So I see that as a potential problem, but I think that the signs would help a lot there to go our ways. But other than that, with the Co-op, I think it's, I don't have any other issue really add to it, so.
The Co-op may do that on their own. The only reason I say that is because I've seen them, you know, as you drive around the lake. So I don't think it would be out of place to ask the applicant, encourage the applicant to work with the Co-op. I think it would be a good thing to have just the sign there. And it very well may be something that they put out on their own. Because anytime they're, you know, they don't pay for water.
Now, to be clear, the underwater crossing is an existing crossing.
Yes, correct.
And there hasn't been any discussion about changing that, that I recall. All of the work that will be done is from the shoreline on the island side, underground power distribution to each of the lots on the island. No change to the existing cable. I think it was well established early on, the capacity of that size line is more than adequate to support the anticipated load. I believe the Co-op came out and tested the line because it's been out of service for some period of time, and they were comfortable that it's serviceable as it stands today to re-energize. So the water crossing piece is all existing, it's been there for all time. There's no, we're not charting any new territory here in terms of that, that piece. It's all from the. It's all from the shoreline of the island and distributing that power on the island, which is, is the only effect that this subdivision is going to have.
Does anyone have strong feelings about requiring a third-party construction observation agreement? How well are these in a sense? I mean, my thoughts are, this is, you know, this is what New Hampshire Electric Co-op does. This is their domain.
I guess I would say, having watched the Co-op with other subdivisions that go in and what they do, it has to be built to their specifications, every piece of that. Down to what the depth, the line of substations, all that stuff. And they are involved every step of the way in making sure that it meets their requirement. Ultimately, once it's installed, it becomes their property. So they have every motivation to make sure that, number one, it meets their requirement and that it's done in a workmanship, work in a like manner so that it doesn't come back to bite them later. So it seems to me that having a third-party observation on that is superfluous.
Do you have any objection with the condition including the codes officer?
No, not at all. No, I don't object.
If you said, "Do the maintenance agree from the applicant?"
Yes.
Yeah, it's a condition.
Yeah, it's a condition. Does anybody have any concerns with the concept of the maintenance agreement?
No, I don't have. The more safe part we could put on this thing.
There you go. So now we move on to parking. And I think this is out of the entire application. This is the hardest part. So when we look at, you know, Tuftonboro, it's a, has more islands than anyone else in the other town on Lake Point Sockeye, probably another town in the state of New Hampshire, though I don't know that for sure. And in that time, I don't remember this other coming up. First question, are two off-street parking spaces? The codes officer, you know, has never heard and has told to them. And traditionally, when I've sat and listened to subdivisions on the island, you know, island subdivisions, none of them large. There were two lots, one lot right in the detour. And now they're adjusted to even a couple of those. You know, the concept of it never came up. Now, what has been the historic practice of the town and how they've treated island lots? There certainly didn't want to have existed after zoning was written. There's certainly been ones that are done. And it seems to be the historic practice of the town has been that people find parking for their islands where they can. And that may be at a marina, that may be at a friend's house, that may be, you know, anywhere where they can tie their boat up and, you know, park. And for as long as the town of Tuftonboro has existed, or as long as people have been on the islands, that's what has happened. Does it work? It seems to.
Yeah, it seems to work.
Thus far, the town of Tuftonboro, the islands, the people are pulling up, getting in boats, they're finding parking, and they are conveying themselves in the watercraft out to their island and they are enjoying their island. Now, we do not read zoning, we do not have authority to change zoning. The zoning exists the way it is and the zoning reads. I'm just going to read it again. "On and after the effective date of disordinance, all new structures and developments, as well as additions to or changes in use in existing structures, shall be provided with off-street parking spaces in accordance with the following specifications in six point two. F. Residential dwellings, two spaces per dwelling unit."
They talked about main dwellings.
Well, the zoning is zoning. It says what? It does not, there is no exclusion here. There is nothing saying, you know, when we talked six seventy-four, forty-one, there was an exclusion. There is no exclusion, the zoning is clear. Now, the zoning does not say where the parking spaces need to be. It does not say the parking spaces need to be on the side of the parking space.
We kind of heard the demo in person anyway.
Yeah, I and I, and you could make that argument. But again, they are exempt from, they're exempt from roof.
It's never required before then with the island subdivision, right?
Well, that has been the historic practice, but the zoning is the zone. It is written the way it is written. And the zoning says two parking spaces. So how has been, what has been the historic practice for people parking? And how does it, you know, does that practice fulfill the obligation of two parking spaces? So if a person can put two parking spaces at this marina where he has his boat in bay or, you know, has a contract with this marina over here that, you know, he has, you know, two parking spaces with his boat, you know, boat launch, or he owns this cottage here, or he has two parking spaces on the moon. The zoning says two parking spaces.
Well, people who own, who are going to buy one of those lots and build a dwelling are, they're going to have a boat to get to it. They're going to have to take, put that boat someplace in a marina and they're going to have to park their car there. So if we could make a condition of this subdivision that the four building community is issued, just like the main property, that they provide jack with evidence that they have parking spaces for two cars, whether it be in Tuftonboro, or whether it be in over Trestles, or face marina, or anyplace else.
One thing we, I mean, one thing I think anyone who lives in this area or knows near islands can tell you is that just because their island is in Tuftonboro or their island is in Lake Point Sockeye, they are on Lake Point Sockeye and they access the lake where it is convenient for them to get to wherever.
If, if you, let's look at the math, okay? Five hundred island properties, two cars, thousand cars. Do we see a thousand cars in a parking lot? No, that tells you right there, they're everywhere. If I, if I live on the other side of Guilfer or Mary or over in Sanfrenton or something like that, and I have a place in Cal Island, I would want to come to probably, let's say, Harilla Landing, a nice point, because between there and you get to Tuftonboro is another forty minutes. So, you know, they may look at the shortcut that way. Some will look at it the waterway, all right? But regardless, there's either people on docks, the valet service has gotten really popular. You have, you have Trestles, you have Harilla Landing, you have Melvin Village Marina, you've got Goody Hawk ends doing valet. They're all building up these off-site warehouses, valet, and you know what? Works pretty well for people. So, you know, and it says that they have to have two parking spaces. It doesn't say where it has to be necessarily. So if they can prove that they have parking through their valet, great. Or the dock that they own, that they're allowed to have two spaces, like River Reach. They're allowed a couple of spaces there. So, and, you know, I just see it as, you know, we're kind of looking at a little bit of semantics here a little bit, but the zoning is very specific, it's two spaces. It's not saying that the lot that we have has to accommodate those spaces. It does not attach it to.
It does not.
Well, logically, we can't. I mean, if even one-fifth of those island owners decided to try and park in that lot.
Wouldn't it?
So in all practical fact, I think we have to just, you know, forget that as an even viable statement for this. And it's much better to find two parking places elsewhere.
Yes, I mean, I think that the burden as the zoning specialist has is that when it's a residence or dwelling. Now, I expect they'd say dwelling, but yeah, they need to prove two parking spaces. Now, you know, I think it's important for everyone to understand this, when it's a dwelling. So the zoning does not say, you know, this needs to provide for a park, you know, two parking spaces for the lot. Where does the subdivision regulations require two parking spaces for the lot? It says for a dwelling.
The triggering point is not to.
The triggering point for a dwelling is when they apply for the building. And then they would need, I think it's crucial that they need to provide this. They would not be able to, the zoning requires, two parking spaces.
Certification that they have.
And that can be done, in my opinion, that can be done in what has been the historic practice for people to have parking spaces in Tuftonboro for their island residences, which is, whether it's at a marina, a friend's house, but they need to provide two parking spaces.
You suggested, can we make that a condition?
I have liked, to me, I think that's absolutely necessary.
Yeah.
On the other hand, the zoning is the zone. You know, you're making a condition on how the zoning is written. But I think because of, there has been concerns by many people about the parking, that it needs to be very clear. We're making the condition that already exists, but that it needs to be very clear for all people. And, you know, this is probably going to have ramifications down at Town Hall moving forward. That's what needs that.
Okay, I'll go along with that.
Bill, you see where this stuff can be due? I mean, as far as application.
Yeah, I'm not aware, who's sealed, the firm that applications come through. I'm not aware of any issues with car parking. But island property is a little unique, doesn't, it's easy for me to look at the requirement of two parking spaces per residential unit in a situation where you have a lot and let's say you're going to put up a twelve-unit apartment building, okay? So you have to, as part of your plan, have twenty-four parking places off-site, I mean, off-street, providing four that dwell for those dwellings. Very simple for a single-family home, a single-unit residence structure to, within any lot, you have parking provided.
I think this, the way of doing a trigger to the building permit is better. The other reason I say that is in the town of Tuftonboro, we are allowed two residences on the lot. So now, you know, in the case of two residences or dwellings on the lot, you'd be required to get four parking. So it addresses it in a much more elegant manner overall. Plus, it's worth the zone itself. There, okay?
Yeah.
I think that equally important is that we need to think about the town law. The applicant, the law, the applicant needs to make sure that as they move forward, they use the town law for island residences in accordance with the laws, rules, regulations that exist at the time. So if this lot gets built, you know, this lot gets built ten years from now, that they use the Pier Nineteen lot as the town designated it to be used at that time for these conditions, laws, and such and so forth. I think that's one of the problems with relying on the law to be used as a two parking spaces.
I think it's fairly easy to see that it's not being allowed over like all island residents. Let's be fair, five hundred residences out there. And not that many parking places in the lot. There is no way that everybody can use the lot all the time. So the other side of that, if you can, I don't think we can then say that a portion of that lot has to be dedicated to specific island residents. It's, it's there as a first-come, first-served. And if it becomes inadequate, then we're going to have to look at enlarging it or taking some other approach to dealing with it. But with respect to this particular subdivision and the impact of that, I, it's, I guess I'd say, number one, we don't want to tie specific residences to having a, a different right of use than any other island resident to that lot. Which, if we require that as a residence is built, the, that they provide their own parking, off-street parking, not in the town law, that's not adversely affecting any other island resident's ability to use lot.
And if they're, if they're proven that they have off-site, you know, then the use that they would have of that lot would be typical with every other island person that exists out there. Because as we know, historically, they accessed it by, you know, such and so forth. I mean, people who access it through a trailer, trail their boats back and forth the island are, while it has happened, it is very rare. The reason for that being, it's really a pain to do it every single time.
Yes, it is.
I can't see the, the people on Farm Island using that lot in Nineteen Mile Bay unless they have a slip from Nineteen Mile Bay.
Well, the part of the problem with the law is, they're not going to trail in their boat. The only problem with the law is, is it's a, it's a half mile, I mean, from the water. So if you were to say, "Hey, I'd like to put my car here at the lot. I'm going to pull out of the town car, walk half a mile, get my car, put my boat out, go park my boat somewhere, and then go, you know, go grocery shopping, go pick up my boat, put my boat down the ramp, drive half a mile, walk half a mile back and go..." Will somebody do it if they have no other choice? Absolutely, but they would exhaust every means possible, not to. Do you, any more thoughts on the?
I mean, I'll go along with the requirement for a private building permit to prove that they have to off-street.
I think it needs the zoning requirements and I think it's an elegant, you know, solution too. And I think it's historically how it's happened, even though it hasn't been often formed. I'm trying to explain how it hasn't.
I don't think that would be an issue for most people wanting to answer that. Because they're going to have to use a boat, they're going to pick up their boat someplace. Wherever they get their boat, they're going to be parking their car, right?
Unless they're going to swim.
And so there's an issue in school, but.
Doesn't, to me, they can pick their boat anyplace. The other side of the island, you know, they're going to spend a lot of money on a property. They're going to have money to buy docks they want, or they're going to have the means to buy valet. It goes back, it's all part of the budget. So it's, I don't see why that you could, you could require the applicant or the law owner to certify that it has two secured parking spots in a marina or elsewhere. Just markets law. It's simple, really, that's what we're saying.
All right, does anybody have any? No, I'm good. Okay. I think in a lot of ways, we've answered this last one. We talked in the last meeting about an exaction on the parking on Pier Nineteen. An exaction being a chartering that we need to increase the lot due to project and that, you know, we would have to find out how much it would take to increase the lot and such and so forth. I did meet with the. I did meet with the, with the, the Monarch Public Works Office in Tufton, but I did meet with the road agent on it. And I think, you know, after, you know, looking at some of the information, you know, and determining that there's, again, there's plus or minus, five hundred waterfront, you know, or island homes, and that we are requiring the applicant to, as the zoning determines that we must, to provide two parking spaces, you know, for, for each dwelling, that the concept that we are going to massively increase the influx into this parking lot and require an exaction, because we're talking with ten lots, when there's five hundred existing, you're talking about proportionally two percent increase overall in the lot. And you think, well, you know, there's a two percent increase, but, you know, there can be a two percent increase because it's sunny out there, or it's, you know, it's, I don't see enough there by the time we get done, you know, for us to make it, charging an exaction to increase the size of the lot, there's going to be, they're going to pay taxes on the lot, that will certainly exist. And they're under the burden of being, of having to provide the two parking spaces before they can build anything. So they're already being held to a higher standard than what we have done in the past with island facilities. No one noticed the parking.
Well, what, what we will be doing by requiring the two parking places to be a condition of permanent approval is, I guess, formalizing something that's been informal in the past with respect to that laws. It's not that people live in their places to park before, it's not that when they built the house, they parked their cars in the lot, they did what people always do, which is, kind of places convenient, location free, watercraft can move back and forth, and that tends to be land-based, your shoreside base, we're getting there. So, by including that as a condition, we're formalizing something that seems to be informal in the past, and in terms of lies with the zoning department.
And that removes the necessity for the exaction, so.
Well, and I guess to go back to what I was saying earlier, if, if, if we're looking at it, we're needing to increase that parking lot size specifically to accommodate vehicles associated with this subdivision, then are we turning that lot into one where one class of property owner has a higher right to use than anybody else in the others?
I, I don't really see the data for that, any exaction. As you just said, you know, the, the parking lot itself, you know, the level when you do the math, the rural, these people are going with their boats, doesn't necessarily require any work to be done there, this time, not right now. Maybe down roads, you find that maybe it's deficient down road, and the town can deal with that. The town can deal with deficiencies. So, as far as an exaction goes, I, I, I don't see that evidence. I mean, the town has to deal with deficiencies over there.
Exactly.
The road that was suitable to do growth or whatnot comes there. But is ten lots, you know, as proportionate a substantial amount of increase to cost upgrade to that lot, and the answer would seem to be at this time, no. Not to say that someday, you know, maybe it's ten years, fifteen years, twenty years, but by then, you know, that's why we all pay taxes, that's why my roads get paved, that's why my roads get plowed.
Right.
The other thing, there's a very good tax base for ten lots.
Yeah, that's right.
I think traffic, we have discussed, and we were pretty much, you know, about ten lots. It's fair, we're in the school, and the students are reading around. Any thoughts on traffic?
I would say that the, the traffic, we're going to be steadfast, we can go with the traffic study, and, and build.
No, Lu Ban has a high-traffic zone.
That's what it is, it's built to be that way. Well, as we learned, still have a way to build another V O two. Correct. Any other thoughts, guys? Nope? All right. I think we're going to have to talk about some conditions. And this could, this could be lengthy. There's been a lot of evidence, every subdivision usually has any number of conditions, but obviously this one, it's a little unique, it's on island, there's been a lot of information on that. We have standard conditions that we put on most subdivisions, and these are technical in nature, there are things like certificate of monumentation, say, the individual lots have been, you know, monuments have been set to find the, so I think we can all agree that a lot of these would have to be applied to this application. Correct. So I'm just going to go down. The applicant shall set the boundary monuments and submit a certificate of monumentation relative to such. The approval is subject to receipt of the following, the approval is subject to all required state and federal reviews, approvals, and permits. Applicant shall provide copies of New Hampshire Electric Corp's final inspection and sign-off to be reviewed, New Hampshire Electric's final inspection and sign-off, site to be reviewed by town codes officer, return to original elevations, and best management practices as outlined by Horizon's engineering. The applicant shall provide cost estimates for site improvements. The applicant shall submit a Myar plan for recording at the Carroll County Registry of Deeds. The applicant shall submit attorney general approvals. The applicant shall post a performance guarantee for site improvements, and you can read about that in the subdivision regulations, or, I left them. You can also do a, most applicants complete the, the, the inspection upon, and then you can separate the, the warrants of the works.
Is there a way to require for a ten lot on the residential facility?
It's not a public hearing.
The pavement of all recording fees is required prior to assigning a recording of the plan. Two separate checks are required for such, both checks made payable to the Carroll County Registry of Deeds. So, man? Hi, Gary. All right, so those are our boilerplate subdivisions, so let's talk about more involved final conditions. While Horizon's engineering reviewed this, they did not perform all the calculations based on, and as we know, the idea is to dot all the i's and cross all the t's. How does the board feel about the final plan, the condition of final plan modifications being certified by the town engineer at the applicant's cost?
I agree.
Yeah.
We've talked a lot about septic systems. We've talked about different types of septic systems, we've talked about phosphorus loads, we've talked about clean solutions versus environmental versus stone and pipe, versus land-based versus island-based. But I think overall, will we agree, would the board feel, I think this is obviously a requirement of the D E S anyway, all septic systems will comply with D E S requirements, and the board would encourage the applicant to use clean solutions against environmental wood-like systems, when reasonably.
Absolutely.
I think another condition that we have, when we talk about water quality, we went over this quite a bit, I think everyone's weighed in on it, but feel free at this point, is that during the construction, they should install water bars or peaches that are established to prevent runoff from traveling down the path, point source at the entry point being the most common. Adhered erosion controls are in the state permit. Apply six-inch minimum layer of natural mulch to path and side slopes, and place a two-foot mulch burn at paths terminating at the lake, subject to town's review, meaning that the codes officer, the most good office. Excuse me one moment, I've got a lot of paper up here. We've talked quite a bit about the maintenance agreement on the power lines. The applicant shall provide a maintenance agreement explaining the rights of the property owners and releasing the town from any liability from the electrical infrastructure to be reviewed by planning board council at the expense of the applicant. I believe that's roughly how we have that worded, we talked about it. How does the board feel, is that agreed about?
Yeah, we talked about that.
In regards to parking, I think summing up what we've talked about would be that prior to the issue of a building permit for a single-family dwelling, the applicant or individual lot owner will certify that two off-street parking spots have been arranged outside of town property, not the town lot. Applicant or individual lot owner, invitees or guests will otherwise comply with all applicable regulations then in existence for the town. I actually believe that was already done.
Definitely.
Could I entertain a motion to approve the application with the conditions as listed?
So?
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so Chip Olby, Mr. Chairman, is the meeting adjourned yet?
Sorry, it's not.
Excuse me.
Thank you.
Someone hold it.
It's no need.
Chip Olby, Meredith, Meredith, your local trust, and Ronald Cooper, boundary line adjustment has been asked for a continuing to begin on November seventh at seven P M at the town office. Is that a reason? Can I get a motion? So, all those in favor?
Aye.
I have a motion to adjourn. So, seven. All those in favor?